This is Tuesday, January 17th. We'll call the meeting to order. Our first items, first item is a resolution. This is a resolution regarding the Chappaqua Crossing, East Village, 480 Bedford Road. It's a review and adoption of a draft resolution concerning the substitution of approved retaining wall block material for the two retaining walls facing Cowden Lane. So last time around, we discussed what the applicant was proposing. There was a shortfall in the original approved stone in the marketplace, so they did not want to be held up. I think they're going to be starting this, maybe this month or next month. And they told us about the substitution and the only issue that came up, really, I thought that was of material, was the issue about making sure that the color was retained over the years. And I see in our resolution, we have got language in here that every 10 years, a report is to be rendered to the town, to the, I guess, the Pine Department, Building Department. And I think that's what we were really looking for and I think what we asked, so I think we're okay with it. But questions, comments, board members? Dick, can you hear us?
I need to send them a phone number.
Okay, very good. Well, is there a motion to move forward with the resolution from three of us here?
Some second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I guess we have, I don't know how you're going to record Dick, it's just present but unable to connect and cannot, he's not here.
We can put on that he's abstained from the vote.
Abstained, okay. Involuntarily. Okay. Our next item is the minutes of our meeting on, what meeting is it?
The 20th of December.
Yes, December 20th, 2022. Again, had some very minor little wood snuffing issues. Anyone have anything material in the minutes?
Nope.
Dick, anything on the minutes? Okay. Yeah. Not seeing any changes or problems. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes of December 20?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think Dick now, aye. Yep. So.
He's working on calling in as well as keeping his video up, so he's working on it.
Thank you.
He can hear you.
He can hear. Okay. All right, our next item is a discussion of the local law referral. This is the NG Zero legislation. This is to amend Chapter 60 of the code of the town of Beucastle to establish a new special use permit for a mixed-use residential buildings that meet certain green building standards at 50 North Greeley. So we last heard this January 3rd. We met with the town board and had a meeting with the town board. We're scheduled with another town board joint meeting next week. What I think would be very helpful, at least for me, is if Sabrina could just outline the zoning districts and what we currently have. At least I have been confused over this and I think we were given some information the other day. So we have the, I think she's got some maps and I think we've got some information here. But Sabrina, would you give us that information?
Sure. So the property is in the existing B R P, Business Retail Parking Zoning District. That district has a height of two stories or 35 feet. I'm not sure. I was having difficulty with the, with the mapping and everything today, Dick, so I'm not going to put up the map. But the entire property is in the B R P zoning district. I'm not sure if there's any other information you want regarding the lot conformance.
Well, is, is the next lot that we're talking about also in this legislation, is that in the same district?
There is a portion of that lot within the B R P and another portion of that lot is in the B R zoning district.
So Sabrina, in that case, somebody was to develop that particular lot, would that division through the lot guide the development on each side? In other words, the B R portion would have to be developed to the B R zoning, no? How would that work then?
No, they, depending on the percentage of the property and where the development is, it would take the more restrictive zone in regards to setbacks and height and whatnot. But if they came in for a special permit because portions of that property are in the B R P or this legislation is currently being written is for B R and B R P.
Thank you.
So it's not dissimilar to what we see with our residential developments? Because very often we see in, in there, and you've always told us that the strictest guidelines have to be in that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Correct, but as a, but, but under a special permit, they would be applying for the special permit for the, for the standards within that special permit.
Right, right, of course.
Yeah, understood.
What, what, I, I have this confusion also. On the other side of North Greeley, what do we have there and something where it changes at Vishoff? I believe.
The, say again, when it changes to single family?
Yeah, what are the zones on the east side of North Greeley?
The zones are, there's B R and B R P on the east side. As you get into the residential neighborhood, it becomes a quarter acre residential.
Okay. Is there anything in this area? I thought I'd heard that there was, at least some area along North Greeley that was currently zoned for three story.
Say that again, I didn't hear that.
I, I was under the impression, probably wrong, that there was, there were some areas along North Greeley that were zoned, currently zoned for up to three stories.
The, in the B R zoning district? It allows up to three stories but a 35 foot height.
I see.
Our ceiling.
Oh, I see what you said, yes, 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 it's, it's marked right here on the, on the chart. I see it. I'm with you, got it. So, we don't have a map, but where?
Give me a second, I'll try and pull it up.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have the map open to Sabrina. I'll, I'll share my screen for the live. Yeah.
Thank you.
Just pulled it up. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay.
So can you move your, your screen down a little bit?
Working on it.
So, so as you can see, the, I, the tan is the quarter acre zone. The B R is the maroon. And then there's a light area which is coming up. The B R P, which is in the bottom left.
So the 50 North Greeley property is here.
Nope, it's back one, yeah, yes, that's the 50 North Greeley property.
The triangle.
Next property.
Next property up.
That's in the B R.
It's the sky.
It's actually not split based on this mapping.
So that, that property is in the?
B R.
B R, which allows up to three stories. Maximum building height, but B R P is up to two stories, but they both allow 35 feet.
And they're both in the same color, right? As far as you can tell, which is a little confusing.
No, those are different colors, are they?
Pink is B R?
B R P.
B R P.
B R P. Right, and the red is the B R.
Yeah, B R P is down here, B R.
I'm going to draw in here.
Good job. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you could raise it and maybe zoom in a little. Sorry, Jen.
No, no worries. When I was zooming in, I was losing some of the data.
Yeah.
So that's why I panned it back out.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to draw a line right here.
Sure.
So that is the tip of the, of what I'm boxing in, that's 50 North Greeley right here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this property here is the property, is the L Cam property in the B R zone. This color here, the, this one here that is B R. And B R P is this lighter tan, kind of looks almost pink tinged on the screen as opposed to the tan of the quarter acre zone.
And the difference between the two, so far you have outlined as just being the number of stories, although the overall height is the same. Are there any other differences, any other parking?
That, uh, parking differences, the B R property is not in the parking district. Anything that is in the B R has to park itself and can't take advantage of what today exists as the B R P's parking district.
Could you explain for all of us, especially me, let's cover the impact of the parking district in terms of the rights or obligations or someone in that district?
So in the B R P parking district, if you have property, it was to be deeded to the town to contribute towards the parking district. And then you would be eligible, you have an agreement signed with the town that says it does not matter what your business is, your parking can be taken care of within the town's lots. On the street, wherever, you're not obligated to providing it on site. A very unique situation exists with 50 North Greeley in that they had their own parking lot, which was not deeded to the town. So while their property is in the B R P zoning district, they have in the past not taken advantage of being in the parking district.
Okay, if they wanted to be in, take advantage of the B R P, could they?
Well, I think that this is going to take some legal review because they, they would not have, yeah, obviously if they're going to develop on the entirety of the lot, they will not have any land to deed over to the town for public parking. But they, because they are in that zoning district, they can ostensibly take advantage of that parking district. Because we don't require everybody to deed us land, because the point is, is that some buildings don't have the land to deed, but they need the park.
So do we track the availability of unused spaces in the parking district? So that when these benefits are conveyed, that we're certain that they can be met by the capacity? Or are we up to date on that and tracking that?
So we are up to date in regards to our public properties and how much parking is at our public properties. I don't, we, I don't think we, we're doing it currently because the employee who was doing those counts is no longer with the town, but the police department was tracking the available spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Um, we have not done that, I don't think, in the past several months and COVID has kind of thrown that out of whack.
Sure.
Um, but I will tell you, you, your board has seen projects come in and add additional, additional apartments and whatnot. They're in the B R P. You have waived that parking requirement because they are in the B R P. That's how it has been treated in the past when you had applications come before you to add additional density.
Yeah, I, I remember those cases. I, unless I'm mistaken, on my memory, the, the add, the request for those spaces has been minimal because the size of the development has usually been, you know, one or two units. So in this case, this particular case of 50 North Greeley, it might take another look see.
Correct.
Is the parking relief afforded by the B R P for all types of parking?
Correct.
Okay, and so, so I understand 50 North Greeley is in a zoning district that does not require you to meet your parking demand on site, correct?
Correct.
And the application or the zoning text before us, which will allow?
I thought that was just the opposite. Did I misunderstand? I, I may have misunderstood.
One of us did.
Yeah. I thought the B R P was, gave the applicant or owner use of other property, but if you were in the B R district, you had to be, you had to have your parking on site.
You are correct, Mr. Chair.
But 50 North Greeley is in the B R P, correct?
Correct. They can take advantage of the parking district.
The B R P, so I wonder if that triggers, I mean, if they conveyed, some sort of conveyance to the town for parking, yes. But if you haven't done that, it seems to me that you, I don't know, this is off for Jennifer, I guess, you might be limited to the rules and regulations of B R. So if you haven't dedicated space into the parking district.
You get the benefits of it.
Yeah, why would you get the benefit of that? Why would you get the change in?
But that's a critical question, right? What, what, what benefits are afforded 50 North Greeley if they have not deeded their parking lot over?
Well, right, in the current condition, they have not either in fee title, deeded any parking area to the town or given the town an easement, either one, in its current condition. They're obviously proposing new development there. So theoretically, their proposal could include, if they wanted to, either, you know, fee title to a portion of the property or an easement over the, the proposed parking garage. You know, there, there's potential there in the proposed condition. But you're correct that currently they have not taken advantage of the parking district by providing the town either an easement or be title to any portions of their property for parking.
Jennifer, the conveyance of a title or easement, does the land that attaches to that, does that have to be available for public parking or could be for any use at the town's sides?
For parking, for public parking.
Thank you.
I have another question for you, Jennifer. In, in this particular case, the applicant has not taken advantage of the conveyance, doesn't, is, is therefore not, shall we say, actively engaged in the B R P. Does that mean that they would revert in terms of our treatment or the town's treatment back to the B R and therefore be entitled to three floors and not two floors?
No, only if they're rezoned. They're still in the B R P district. Just because they haven't taken advantage of the, you know, that parking provision, doesn't mean that they are rezoned to B R. They're still in the B R P district.
Thank you. Is, is there not a world where the applicant could deed or provide an easement to a portion of the parking, a portion that would apply to the commercial spaces? And then sort of be participating in, in the parking district? And then not be obligated to meet its parking requirements on site? And then not be required to have a convoluted zoning that tries to undo parking requirements? It's in the B R P district. Is there a world where if, if, with a couple steps on their end to participate in the B R P, the parking district, we can simplify the application before us?
Um, I haven't seen that analysis. I don't know if that analysis has been done. Sabrina might have gone through that with them. But, um, there's also the height issue as well, that they are in the B R P. Two stories or 35 feet. Um, so that portion of their application would be non-compliant.
You know, it's just because, the, the reason I ask is because the issue with, you know, the, 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 the issues that this board has had with the proposal is with the, the mechanism first and foremost. And then separately, we haven't even really gotten to debating
The substance.
The, the substance of, of, of the proposal, but the mechanism has been problematic for us. It's, it's one thing that we feel like uniform, uniformly is problematic here. And if there's a way to simplify it where it's not this convoluted, you know, special permit, but rather, you know, uh, you know, either a just straight zoning change or a variance for height or, or, or something.
I agree. That's why I was driving at this. I was trying to understand this to see what's driving this. What are, what are the roadblocks that we have here? The hurdles that the applicant has, whether they've realized it or not? And the hurdles that we have in trying to understand why we're doing this and how we're doing it. More on the how, I guess, but.
I think that's where Jennifer was going when she brought up the height situation. And that, it seems to me, getting back to the ass and how do we accommodate that, right? See if we can legitimately and practically for the benefit, I think, of all of North Greeley. Are the, essentially the extra height, which is, you know, greater density, which is fine. It seems to me that, actually I was surprised and I was corrected by Ed in our joint meeting with the town board the other night when I, I think I said I thought it was a three-story zone and, and he said, no, it's a two-story zone. And actually I was astonished that we have North Greeley with a two-story limitation, right? On what is actually, you know, one of our, our primary main streets. And if we really, it just seems inadequate, right? And so I really, for me, myself, I, I, I would promote the greater density on this corridor in order to make it developable and to make a real contribution to the growth of the town. I think that's all great stuff. So the question I would ask in addition to the parking one, and I think that, you know, maybe there's a way around this. Uh, I think the way that, that Eldad is, is suggesting could be looked into. Um, is there any way to, for the town board to grant extra height without going through a special permit or overlay or, or, um, there was another, there was another device that you talked about, I think, in your memo. But can they do that without rezoning? Is there a way, if the zoning board says, if they go for the zoning board, the zoning board says, no, we really can't approve this. Do they have right of appeal to the town board? Can the town board overrule the zoning board?
No.
No.
No, that, in order to allow for additional height here, the two mechanisms would be a variance from the zoning board of appeals or a legislative change to the zoning. Now that legislative change can be, can be in, you know, an almost infinite number of forms. There's so many different mechanisms available. There's the special permit that we're talking about now. There's overlay district, there's a floating zone. Uh, there's just simply making all of the B R district a maximum of three stories. Um, you know, you can even do maximum of three stories in certain circumstances and certain conditions for certain portions of the B R zoning district. There's so much creativity that could be had here.
So I guess what I'm hearing you say is that they could simply, by legislation, they could amend or change the height limit on that piece of property or in that corridor. Just by legislation, without having to go through a special permit process, just change the height limit.
Yes, that is correct.
Judy, zoning.
That would, yeah.
I said zoning change, but the, but.
Legislatively.
No, I understand, but one of the, one of the, I think, problems I have is that the special, like, for instance, I'm a little bit concerned and you guys know how to do this better than I do, but I reread the zoning code because I felt like I had missed something on the height. So I went back and read it again. And the existing permitted uses on this property are retail and residential. Unless I'm mistaken. And the, the device that's being used here is a special use permit. And you don't need a special use permit to develop this property with commercial and residential because they already have that right. So what are the, what are the special characteristics of this particular proposal that would normally fall within a special use permit designation? Or are, are there special things that, that, that are being suggested here that could be legitimized that approach?
Right, so the special things are the increased height, the parking, um, you know, the, the parking modifications, the enhanced and requirements for environmental sustainability, all of those. And, you know, the, the special permit process goes not necessarily to the use because you're right, that the uses that are proposed would be allowed, you know, as of right, subject to a, a site plan application by your board, but to allow for these other things like the increased height, the reduced parking, et cetera. Uh, the special permit process allows the town board to retain control over review of the application and determine whether it meets those criteria in a way that it's, that is satisfactory to the town board to allow it to proceed. So it's a, it's a, it's a different mechanism to allow for additional control over the project.
I understand the desire for control over the property. I, I read the, the zoning on, you know, I think I read the state sort of parameters for this and I understand that, you know, we can have our own as long as you don't run into the state. But it seemed to me that it was most specifically talking about use. But if there are other attributes that can fall in there, fine. I just wanted to be sure that I understood how this is getting done.
It's interesting to me because in addition to the rights that are conveyed, some of the requirements in these districts actually become obligations. Difficult obligations perhaps for the applicant. So to the extent that they don't take advantage of the parking, we, obviously we understand the parking issues. But in addition, we're imposing this requirement, it's a requirement in this district that they have commercial. And that may be an issue that's causing even, you know, more friction for the, for the applicant and for future applicants. So it's, it's, you know, it's, uh, well, we'll, we'll get into that later on, I guess. But it seems to me that what we're looking at here, what our conversation's starting to go toward once again is something that expands beyond just this one property, but looks at this district and frees up the district for all property owners in the district. At least, that's where.
Robert, may I, may I just bring something up in the middle of the meeting?
Sure, go ahead, yeah, please, Chuck, go ahead. Yeah, please, yeah, so everyone can hear you. I actually planned to have this little bit of a conversation because the applicant also had asked if, if she could speak and on various, as we come from various points, I had no idea.
You need to identify yourself.
Say again?
I think you need to identify yourself.
I got it. There's a cover on this thing.
It's okay.
Uh, this is Charles Napoli speaking.
Is it working, Felicia? Is it turned on?
Good, thank you. The, uh, one, one, one of the things about the parking district, which I'm reasonably familiar with is that, that in the old days, it was, parking district was made because we didn't have enough parking anywhere. And so that they had to come up with some ideas, some rules, some regulations, some zoning restrictions in order to preserve as much parking as possible. And I'm thinking about North Greeley Avenue and South Greeley Avenue, mostly South Greeley because that's where I've been, did most of my work. There is a line that starts at your front property line and goes back only 70 feet in which you can develop. So they had a development line of where you could put, back in the old days, offices on top and retail on the floor, on the first floor on street level. Got to the point where they, they, they decided that we wanted more, more businesses in town. You couldn't do it because there wasn't enough parking. So that's how they limited the heights to two stories in the parking district because we were, everybody, regardless of whether the site was, had a lot of space or not a lot of space, could share parking. It was, it was a shared parking district. Limited by the amount of buildings that was on the property to preserve space on the property. If I came to you tomorrow with a project at the Rite Aid and said, I would like to change the use to a, a, a farm or an indoor lettuce factory or, or whatever. I would be before you and you would, before you gave me any permission, you would give me the requirement to get what Jennifer was talking about, the deed and the right to move on to the property. You've done that before. You've required applicants to show you, and what Eldad was talking about, show you the, the, the proper easement documentation that helps share parking. And so, and, and by doing that, you would obviously be limited to what would be able to be built on that property because you gotta have parking for it, at least three oars, whatever you're putting there. But there's another thing. The, the variance that we're talking about, if you were a zoning board or if you were a town board. I mean, when you come before a board with, with, with this application, one of the big things they say, well, what's your hardship? And you get a use variance or any other variance based on hardship. And I think in this particular case, I can, I would say that this is a self-induced hardship, not only for the applicant, but maybe for the parking district itself. So the key words are, is this a hardship or self-imposed hardship? Uh, and, and furthermore, if he's, if he could build on that property if he gave away, in the parking district, if he gave away spaces for the parking district's use. And, and I don't know if 40 spaces underneath in the back of a building, you know, would qualify because he needs all of those anyway. So it's, it's like he's not giving anything away. He's just using everything that he needs himself. And, and, and more importantly, nobody else in the parking district is using it. Get him out of the parking district, give him the, put him in the B R zone, and now you have something to play with. That's all I needed to say. But, but know that the parking district has requirements to leave some space for everybody to use.
Okay, great, thank you. It's very helpful context, thank you.
Chairman, if I could just jump in, Chuck, I, I agree, that was very helpful and. Chairman, if I could just jump in, Chuck, I I agree. That was very helpful and a nice history of the zoning in that area. Um, just on the variance issue, hardship is the standard for a use variance. It used to be the standard for an area variance, but that's no longer the standard. Um, it's a balancing test. So an applicant doesn't have to show hardship for an area variance. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Jennifer, can you?
Thank you. What triggered it was the word use.
Right, yes. Thanks, Chuck.
Yes, go on.
I, I was just curious to know what, what would exactly the situation, if you're putting the application in front of the zoning board of appeals, what do they, as it is, what, what would they be asking for? And is that something the zoning board of appeals can give them? And if not, is that the reason for the special permit? Uh, you know, i- is that something we need to look at?
So we, we obviously can't, you know, speculate as to whether or not they would receive the variances that they would are asking for. I think we know that they would need a part as proposed. They would need a parking variance. They would need a height variance. I frankly don't know if I, I don't think I've seen a full zoning analysis either prepared by the applicant or reviewed by our building inspector to be able to identify all of the variances um, that they would be, that they would need for the proposed project as is. Um, but generally the zoning board, you know, reviews area variances under a balancing test. There's five statutory factors that they have to use um, in engaging in that balancing test. The balancing test weighs the benefit to the applicant against the detriment to the community. If the variances are granted, um, they have to be the minimum variances necessary uh, to achieve the applicant's um, you know, goals. And um, and then there was one other thing too. Of course, it's blanking on me now, but that's generally the standard that the zoning board has to appeal to very, um, has to apply. It's a very prescribed standard unlike your discretion as a planning board reviewing the site plan, which is much more discretionary.
So if, if the, if the underlying zoning right now is two stories and the ask is four stories, just generally, um, it's about a double the development density. I mean, it's very general terms, not exactly, obviously, because a lot goes into that, but that would be, I would guess, a pretty big ask of the zoning board. But if they could be convinced that actually it's to the benefit of the community, which is one of the one of the narratives that we're, we're hearing and I'm, I happen to personally, I happen to agree with. Uh, I wonder if that, you know, if that wouldn't be a, that would be an unreasonable way to go.
Yeah, so one, one of the five factors that they have to balance is substantiality. Um, substantiality is measured not just mathematically, um, which here, yes, that would absolutely be a mathematically substantial variance. Um, but substantiality is also measured in terms of its impacts to the community um, and to the, to the immediate neighborhood. Um, so that's more of a, you know, a discretionary call on behalf of the, the zoning board.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I, I, sorry to sidetrack us, but I thought that was really important to get the context because uh, I think it's really important to, to have the base to understand where we're coming from and what, where we are.
I do think, just there's one outstanding question for me. It's just about the BRP. Um, and Pibbsworth really, if, if, you know, I, I don't know, uh, you know, if there are thresholds or requirements or, 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 you know, what, what are the, um, if you are deeding or or you providing an easement, is there a requirement that you provide sufficient parking to more than cover your own need? Or are there any requirements? I mean, again, coming back to the original point, we can't can Pibbsworth really benefit from being in the BRP? Um, if, if, if that's uh, the case, then then that's something to consider. If not, then we should just drop, drop that line of questioning and move on altogether.
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to be able to answer that question with specificity tonight, but that's certainly something that you can include in your memo that the town board should explore whether the existing zoning with taking advantage of the BRP district is an option that's available for the applicant that would achieve, you know, a similar or close to similar result as the special permit legislation.
If it doesn't, it doesn't supply the full um, the full, the full satisfaction of, of, of the problem here, to the extent that it might satisfy some of it, mitigate some of the, the delta that we're talking about. That really could be very helpful and useful, I think, to the town board.
And it's in the context of a zoning district that contemplates meeting a parking requirement off-site. Right, just conceptually, it's in that zoning district and that is what's being asked here. Uh, when it comes to the parking ask, that, that, the, the vast majority of the commercial parking, again, which is the parking that I'm most concerned with, um, that that be, that demand be met off-site. And just in light of the joint conversation we had with the town board last weekend, I know there's a desire to figure out how to address this parking issue and I, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't here to see the, the prop in person, but I did see it. Uh, the, the prop that Lisa had. You know, there's, there's a desire to address this issue specifically. If there's a way to do it, one, that's already in place, e- even better. Two, I do like the idea that this concept exists. We're not inventing a new idea here. This concept exists in, you know, to me, anyway, it makes it a little bit of an easier lift.
So I, I I would be in favor of finding a way, and it looks like they're looking for a way to facilitate that. And I think that's all good. The only concern that I've had about it is the extent to which those um, those um, parking spaces um, that they would end up getting as a result being awarded, so to speak, as a result of that, might be parking spaces that now wouldn't be available to other businesses there. So I, to me, the threshold, I, I support them being in the district and finding a way for them to use spaces. The only question for me is how many?
I, I think that's fair. I think that's totally fair. Um, the parking is the parking district, uh, just one, just one, one second, kind of, the parking district, I, I would love to know more details about it. I mean, it must contemplate how to award, how many? Is there, is it unlimited, right? You know, it, you know, is there some sort of? Yes?
Yeah, so I just, I, I found the um, the section of code that addresses this. It's really, it's one sentence. It's in section four, uh, sixty dash four twenty F one. And it is essentially unlimited. It says, in the BRP district, the requirement for providing off-street parking and loading spaces shall be waived where the applicant has voluntarily offered to dedicate to the parking district or the town of Newcastle an easement over the entire designated parking slash loading slash circulation slash setback area on the site proposed for development for off-street parking, loading and or circulation purposes.
That's not going to work for this site.
Yeah, no, it does not.
Depends how you interpret that language, by the way. That language is designated area. That could be designated as these six spots, right? I mean, I was.
In the past, in the past, when you've had properties come before me, and I say, um, I forget the store that was there where the yoga studio is now. When Hall of Scoops came in, there was a piece of that property abutting the town parking lot. He deeded that area to the town per the town code so they could take advantage of being in the parking district and not having, um, and taking advantage of parking in the town parking lots. Because he had the area that was his private area, but he didn't have, but he was using the parking district. So we required him to deed that area to the town or to the parking district in order to continue using the town properties for his change of use.
And Sabrina, that's not possible in this.
No, it is not possible unless they were to not develop on a portion of this property and then say that is part of the parking district.
Well, why not? Why couldn't they just, they could grant an easement? They don't have to convey it in fee, right? They could just convey an easement. Right? And and that would satisfy the requirement. So they don't have to give it up in fee and just say.
There's a question, there's a question since it would be a new building. Every building to date that we've been dealing with under this, this parking district is an existing structure.
Right, but is there, is there um, language that prevents that? I mean, and we don't, we don't answer that question, but, but it does sound like there's something to work with here. Because the concept of, of accommodating parking offsite exists in the zoning district, is in that zoning district. I think it makes it easier and takes away some of the
There may be a kernel here.
Messiness of the proposed language.
And it's not, like you said, it's not actually for us to solve, it's for.
Yes, but I think it's all we should include in the memo.
Statement is that I think that we support this effort, I think.
And it should be investigated, uh, really, uh, quite thoroughly. And um, and then I think again, Eldad, as you said before, you know, Lisa's prop the other night, that, you know, those are the other kinds of things that could be thrown into the equation, which, you know, really start to make things different.
Just so I understand, when, when you say easement, what it really means is you're saying that uh, a general re- a resident or someone who's driving into this area could potentially get on their property and park. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Easy, right, would be, for example, um, this developer could grant an easement to the town for public parking for the entire parking garage that's being proposed.
Jennifer, is there any kind of degree to which the easement must be granted? Is it, is, could it be, I mean, on the other extreme, de minimis?
Three spaces.
Exactly.
Or all the commercial spaces that they're proposing.
Or just what, two or three, or it's tiny, yeah. I mean. Is that, is that permissible?
It, it's just that one sentence that I read to you is the only sentence in the code that feels what that's right located. So it's tough to say. We have to take a look at it with the building inspector.
Right, we're not concerned.
I, I, I know that we are going beyond what needs to be thought about here, but I, I would just like to say that v- very often, those kind of things can be prevented or just look like it's difficult to park, right? Like you drive into something and it's sort of indicate, it, it's not clear to you that it's public parking or I can't really park there. There's some sort of number that indicates resident. It, it's, you're, you're effectively not getting what you need for the parking, so I mean, I, I, you, you, we've seen that, I've, I've seen that personally in certain towns where you sort of go in, it's supposed to be public parking. But then there's all these reserved signs and then you have to keep reading and saying from this hour to that hour and you know, there's all these things that are confusing and that if I was going there to shop for a half hour, I'm not going to park there because I'm not sure whether I'm allowed to park there. So I'm, I'm just saying that I don't know if that's very viable for this particular proposal in its current form. Um, I, I had one other question and I'm sorry if this was answered, but what did we get in terms of, like, what did we hear from the town board as to their reason to create a special use permit? Did they articulate that to us? Did we ask that?
I think it's, you know, Jennifer outlined different strategies and this is the one that I guess the town board and the applicant decided to pursue, but there are different strategies that could accommodate this or move in this direction. I, I don't know. I wasn't there. I don't know what the, the, sure, maybe the applicant can help us a little bit on that, give us some context.
Hi, my name's Nanette Born and I'm an urban planning consultant for the applicant. And when we began meeting with the town to um, put this project forward uh, and we, we explored various options for how to entitle it. We considered the overlay districts. We considered a special permit district, uh, special permit use. And what we were trying to convey was that this project was a very different kind of project. It was a different lifestyle project, different from your traditional zoning. That it was, um, it was not only, it was sustainability uh, plus that it in, it incorporated in the sort of the core of its being some sustainability and, and green environmental components and attributes that are, were quite different from what is traditionally zoned and developed in in Westchester in this area and which is why we, why we developed with the um, with the town. We, we wrote an, an original zoning district uh, for the special permit that was modified by the uh, town staff. But inherent in, in both versions is this green component that is aspirational and something that would be um, capable of being achieved with extraordinary efforts uh, to incorporate um, access to bike, um, to pedestrian. And, and without overwhelming the community with more parking that just encourages people to get in their car and park um, and, and drive around.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, so I have a question about, about that, not the last part, but about the green building stuff. I don't understand why it is in a special, as a definition of a special permit use if in fact you could do all those things under current zoning. There's actually, you know, there's no reason for you not to do these things. You, there's, the town wouldn't stop you from doing these things. So it, these are, that's actually sort of building department stuff as far as I see. I mean, it's energy code, state energy code, our local codes, our building codes. So I don't understand how zoning is ness- for those particular aspects of the project is necessary for you to do that.
Not necessarily for us, with the exception of the need for additional height and modifications to the parking, but it was really supposed to be an articulation of of the kind of projects that the town was hoping to attract and encourage in the future. So it was a policy statement. It was a, it was a new direction that, that we were trying to convey in zoning.
So the suggestion here, I, I guess, if I'm reading you right, correct or wrong, but would be that this would be written into the zoning code as a requirement by the town of this lot and the lot north to it, north of it.
Right, originally, we did not include the lot north of it. It was, we included, um, I think we had a, a
So.
Lower, a, a smaller square footage that could have incorporated, maybe.
The town put it in, right?
Which is, we, we have no problem with that.
Well, I imagine not. But I, 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 I guess, I still don't understand, uh, this is not a conver- this is not an argument I should be making with you. I'm just trying to get the information. This is a discussion probably with the town uh, board that, that I think that maybe we want to make, which is that I mean, I, I guess I just, I don't understand it as something that belongs in the zoning code. I understand it's aspirational. But if it only applies to this lot and a lot north of it, and I'm not sure that the stipulations that are in the legislation right now for the development of this lot actually can work on the north lot. There's no demonstration that these stipulations allow that piece of property to be developed under the stipulations. It hasn't been, as far as I know, it hasn't been tested yet. As sort of a site planning test fit, if you will. So um, I just don't understand why it's necessary to be in there as a, as a, I guess it's, to me, it seems like it's just a statement about how great this project is and we can all say how, if we agree with it, how great these objectives are without loading it into zoning code.
Right, and I think if you look at other zoning codes throughout the country, this is very typical of what they're in, in incorporating into their requirements and it really is a, it's, it's a different lifestyle. It's a different kind of development project.
Sorry, can I, can I ask you what you mean by lifestyle?
It, I'm, what I mean by lifestyle is that when you only, when you rent next to a train station and you have one parking space, if you are a family that has three cars, this is not going to be the lifestyle that you want. These, this is going to be marketed to people that want to be more active, um, walking.
That's standard TOD stuff.
I'm sorry?
It's standard TOD developments.
Right, and this is TOD plus.
What's the plus?
Well, I think your, your typical TOD um, does not necessarily include all of the green components, uh, your.
But it's okay, that's fine, but it's not, it's not a function of the TOD.
No.
Okay.
No, it's, it's trying to create a place and, and zoning doesn't necessarily lend itself to create a place. I think the town uh, with, with our encouragement and our involvement, we were trying to work with the town and coming up with some zoning language that would create a unique place.
Okay, I'm just suggesting that that could be, you can do all of that without the zoning text.
Yeah, and I, I guess my issue on this is um, along these same lines is and, and at some point, we'll get back to the, the memo on the legislation. So that, that critical first paragraph to me is going to be, is makes or breaks the way we're going in this, in this thing. But what is to prevent someone, some property parcel of owners on the other side getting together and coming in and saying, we want four stories. Uh, we're going to put in sixty percent charging stations. We're going to put in um, thirteen percent affordable housing. We're going to do all this kind of stuff. What do we start doing then? It seems to me that we have a patchwork of zoning, which is not what zoning is supposed to do in terms of coming out with. what zoning is supposed to do in terms of coming out with some sort of integrated, um, uh, place. So, my concern with this is, and I asked last time, and I, I didn't mean it to be flipped, it really is not flipped, what's so special about this parcel? Not all the other attributes, because those attributes and those features can be placed by another person on another parcel, anywhere in this town, not only just North Greeley, but South Greeley, anywhere in the hamlet. So, what is so special? I, I, I have in my own mind a couple of things that are special, but um, I don't think that this description of things that we're going to do in terms of lifestyle are the things that make this distinctive from the guy across the street who can as- assimilate, um, six lots, or the lot north of here, or, or, uh, so that's the issue for me, I really, and I love this, that we're looking at something different, as, as we were dis- discussing before, maybe we can get there differently. But I think, I, I just have this inherent problem, if we are creating a zone for this property, knowing full well that it's not that special, we could have it duplicated across the street, by yourselves also, by the way you came across and bought it on the parcel. And so, i- to me, it makes no sense, uh.
Well, let me just, let me just make two points on that, and, and one is, which is the, the reason why we wanted to incorporate as many qualitative aspects into the zoning as possible, to make sure that it was a discretionary act on the part of the town board and the planning board. And secondly, what is unique about this property? It has to be the property owner. And I think you've heard, if Don Feinberg were here, he would tell you, and I have heard him so many times, extol what he, what he's hoping to achieve with his property, and it may not be what what you would do with your side, or what I would do with property that I own, but I do know from the, from what, what I've heard him say is he is looking to this as a legacy property.
So, understood, and that's fantastic.
That's great, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But I, 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 I would just ask.
That's, that's why this property.
That's the aspirational part, and we think, I, I think that, I think we all, that's great, right?
Yeah.
Would he do that? Would he not do that if he didn't have that particular language in this zoning text? Would he say, oh, well, it's not the zoning text, so I'm not going to do that, my aspirations, you dashed my aspirations, I'm not going to, I'm not going to do that?
He would do it, because that's what he wants.
That's what he's going to do, he's going to do it anyway.
Well, and he's exceeding many of the items that are in this, the zoning, just for that reason.
Dodging my point, my point is, what is in here? Would he do, if, if, if what is in here wasn't in here, would he not do that? You would develop it anyway.
That's true.
And it would exceed our standards.
So, why do we need it in the zoning code?
To make sure that it is built the way that, that it is approved.
We will handle that through the, our regular.
I have a problem with this.
In the town.
Can I talk for a minute?
Can we hear you, Nick? Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, I, some of, these things are, that you're, you're talking about as lifestyle changes, they're going to change. I mean, it's, it's, it's like in California, uh, rain gardens were great, but I can tell you that in the southern part of this state, they're all dead now, because the account, you know, the climate, I'm sorry, the climate has changed. And so, the rules that you think you have now for this better life should not be put into the zoning because it's going to change. It just will. Okay, I'll be quiet now.
Yeah, thank you, Nick.
Okay. Thank you.
But thank you for the context, so, uh, it comes across like we're arguing or not.
We're trying to make sure we get it, do it cleanly.
Yes, and, and I, more importantly, from my standpoint, fairly, um, and not in a way that, um, constrains, uh, other, other property owners.
Yeah, I, I know this isn't your intent, but the language that is emerging here with lifestyle, and, and maybe I'm going too far here, but the implication is that we are now legislating lifestyle. I don't think it's the town's role to do that, government's role to do that, right?
We don't, we don't want that.
Right, I think that's Nick's point.
And, and you left out old elderly people. You know, so that's kind of like a discrimination, because you said, oh, they can walk. Well, maybe so, maybe no. But I would suggest is that you have a s- a statement that says the state of the art for environmental aspects of destroying and building a new building are what we're looking for, and they should be defined at the time the project goes forward.
Good, um, should we go to Jennifer's, uh, and, and Sabrina's draft memo? By the way, do we have any information, uh, from anyone? Uh, maybe it was the town board, maybe it was the applicant, um, on the, on that, at least from my standpoint, uh, purpose and intent paragraph?
I have it here. I mean, the original.
Yeah, the original, I have the original, but, um, I, I think, I think we all, yeah, exactly, the redraft. I think we all agreed at the last meeting that it needed work, and I'm just wondering what that might be. I, I, you know, I, I opine that there were some special features to the property, and, and Thompson actually disagreed, he did not think it was a- all that special, in fact, he thought it was easier. So, those are the kinds of things I think that we need to be looking at, um, along with the other avenues that we've already identified earlier about this BR, BRP and, and parking, uh, information. So, I don't know if that's, has anyone seen it? Has anyone worked on it? I don't know if it was coming from the town board, Jennifer and I was coming from Ed's office, or, um, so I.
No additional work has been done on this code.
I, I guess then, from my standpoint, the broad brush on that, uh, purpose and intent is, uh, that so-called lifestyle and, and these kinds of things, uh, legislating qualities of, of the, the, the plan, uh, really is, is not zoning, and what we really need to identify are the salient points, if we, if we're going this route, that, uh, need, uh, either hardship or need, uh, relief, and, 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 and benefits, uh, articulated, I mean, real benefits to, to the community to, to justify the, um, the leap here. Uh, that's, yeah, that would be my comment on this, and, and I've said it now a couple of times, but, uh, we real- I, I think that first paragraph from my standpoint is, is critically important, because I, I think it's the underpinning, if we're going on this route.
I wonder if, I wonder if the reason, I, I mean, let's for a second assume that the owner, um, of the property would put in all of this if he's, he or she is required to do it, right? And I wonder if the town board is sort of saying, well, you need us to say, e- you know, you can have X number of stories, you can do with X, X percent less parking, but in return, we want this, this, and this, and that's the reason for the text in there. Um, I mean, I do agree with Tom, where, you know, it doesn't make sense that we're legislating for lifestyle here, so if it's really about what is it that we want in return of those two, um, things that we are giving, if we're giving it, maybe that is what we should really be focusing on. And my guess is, if the town board is sort of saying, you know, let's look at this, and so we've always said we want to be ahead on, uh, green measures and sustainability, et cetera, et cetera, so here's how that can be incorporated into the law, right? And if that's the case, then, then we should look at it as what is broad enough language that, that ca- that's good for us, and then the question is, does this really belong here in a special use permit? Or does this require a larger look at, you know, the lot, the text of either the zoning code or the architectural code, um, code, right? Like, I don't know where that belongs, but it seems to me that that's the way to look at it, rather than um, saying, that, at least that's the reasoning that I'm coming to, is maybe the town board's looking at it and saying, all right, we are going to make these, make these exceptions for them, so, but in return, we want this exceptional property that we are all happy about.
Well, I've, from, uh, from what I've heard, uh, tonight, and from what we heard before in our meetings, uh, from the applicant, is that this truly is an aspirational project for this, uh, landowner. I've, I've had the good fortune of working with developers for whom there are legacy projects, and they do something really extra special, because this wants to be one of the signatures of who they are and how they care about things and the people they care about. And those are really good clients to work with, I got to tell you, they're great. They're people you can get on board with. And, uh, so, I'm not sure that this is a quid pro quo on the, doesn't sound like it's a quid pro quo. It sounds to me as though, um, it's something the town board embraces, and it seems to me, personally, I think it's, should be embraced. The only question here is whether it belongs to the zoning code, because of zoning code, you know? First of all, it just messes it up from what I, how I, you know, the fewer words in the zoning code, the better off you are. And second of all, there are something, there's something potentially restrictive about it that we haven't sort of sussed out yet, that maybe we ought to be, we can avoid that if we just eliminate this, this lang- this kind of language from it.
Yeah, or in the very, or in the very least, it, it'd be broad enough that you can think about, if it was seen as a, um, a role model to then replicate across the street where, where four properties come together and build something similar, whatever it is, like, is there a way that it is broad enough that it becomes a better standard than maybe, but, yeah.
Yeah, but perhaps there is, maybe there's, we should take a stab at that, or somebody should take a stab at that. But, uh, and getting to the purpose and, and intent section, though, uh, the way, you know, Bob is, uh, focused on it, I, I, I would, I, I agree, it needs to be really, really focused, I mean, what really is the purpose and intent? And to me, I think those, or those redundant terms, I don't, I'm not quite sure, but that's the way those things work. To me, the purpose and intent is, uh, from the client's point of view, and I think, I think from the town board's point of view, would be the, the redevelopment of North Greeley is a positive public good, and it's an, and, and it's something that has been needed for quite a while. And that the, and I don't know whether this belongs in the purpose and intent, but that the, uh, ways in which to get there are extra development rights, in other words, another couple of stories. And, you know, maybe, uh, I don't know what else it would be, I mean, it seems to me that's really what the ask is. Excuse me, and the parking consideration in the parking district, but that's underlying anyway. And I think there's a way to make that work without it being in this document, but if it needs to be in the document, I don't care. But those are essentially, I think, the two things that are being asked that maybe just to focus zoning text on what the zoning text really is meant to do. And, and not go into these other things, if there's a sentence that says, by the way, it's going to be, you know, green technology, so on and so forth, that's fine, I guess. But the walkability, livability, that, that's a, to me, that's like a sales pitch, that really doesn't belong. Real estate brochure.
So, if I may bring your attention to the comments that Jen and I drafted for you in your letter on page two or five, under, we did it as you went through the legislation last time. We made these comments for you, so, you know, if you could review the draft, you know, and, and kind of give us some guidance as to whether or not you're content with the way it's written, whether you want to make changes to it. Um, the goal of this is to get something to the town board for, on Thursday, for their packets, because you are scheduled to have a joint discussion with them about this, where you can elaborate and explain to them what you mean by your comments for each of these.
And thank you, Sabrina, and by the way, I just want to say, this work you guys did is excellent. I mean, it, to me, it really, really is well done, the, the, this is, I don't know how, you guys are magicians, how you took those conversations we had and turned it into actually a rational document, and I can't believe that we actually said all these things in the way in which you wrote them, and I know we didn't, so I really appreciate the work, I think it's really very well done, and thank you for that.
So, maybe a creative writing pilfer.
Sabrina, my, I was wondering if you sent this by email, because I don't have it in my packet for some reason.
It was sent by email on.
I sent it on Monday.
Monday, Monday.
Yeah.
What day are we?
Yeah, what day is it? Say Tuesday, yeah, I sent it yesterday.
Okay.
By the way, a quick, a quick thing for everyone, uh, if you haven't gone through it yet, you need to, uh, change your, your, update your town email.
Yeah.
They changed, the town changed it, apparently they'll be changing it again soon, so, with the MFA, so, just understand, the great, those guys at Logically are fantastic, they're really, I frustrated them a lot, but they got through it.
They were so patient.
I circulated their phone number to everybody in any email last week.
Yep.
Yeah.
And if you hit two four one, you get Westchester, you get our folks.
Yep.
So, they're super helpful.
Yep, they're very, very helpful.
They were very, very kind to me, because I've just frustrated the hell out of them. So, they're good, yeah, I agree.
So, um, I think I, I, I concur with Tom, I think this, uh, draft memo is very good and does address a lot of the concerns we raised last time. Um, I think, um, we want to move forward with the document, um, uh, I don't have too many comments on this, I, I think it does, uh, capture a lot of our concerns, I think, um, we can convey any additional concerns. I think there are two sort of external concerns that, that, uh, we may want to include in here, or two additional concerns. One is, Tom, what, what you're talking about, which is this idea of legislating sustainability, uh, features, uh, addressing, um, you know, uh, uh, fluffy language about, uh, uh, walkability, um, all stuff that I, again, support, um, but just may not belong in, in, in a zoning resolution, there's that piece of it. And then there's the, the, the other piece, which we have been talking about, which is, um, and it, and it ca- it became relatively clear in our joint session last week with the town board, which was that, um, the town board, I, I do not want to, nor do I speak for them, but the impression that I got is they, they're looking to answer the question of what is the best option of what to do with fifty North Greeley. And they don't really want to have the larger discussion than we, we, we might be willing to have about what's, uh, what should we do with North Greeley as a whole, what should we do with the east side? And while I'd love to have those other discussions, if they do want to focus on, um, this parcel specifically, um, you know, and we have issues with the proposed zoning text, um, we have begun the conversation and hinted to a, a way of, of sort of shrinking this, uh, so that it is more specific and, and tailored toward fifty North Greeley, doesn't have to even involve the site to the north, because that site to the north is not in the BRP, if I remember correctly. So, uh, you know, the question of off-site parking, um, doesn't really apply in the same way to the site to the north, fifty North Greeley. And so, um, you know, I think this memo was great, uh, we can advance it and then continue, I mean, to, with, you know, with, with comments, if you like, um, but, uh, we should incorporate, one way or another, those two, I think, concepts.
There, there's, um, so I, I was holding to the last one more thing, which is an ask here, which is process. And under existing zoning, because, and, um, Jennifer and Sabrina can correct me if I'm wrong about this, but under existing zoning, because if this was to be done, the, with commercial and residential on this site under existing zoning, and it's currently commercial, I think, because it's a change of use, the planning board would have site plan review authority. And an ask here, or I don't know whether it's really specifically an ask, but the consequence
Right.
of this process is to potentially take that authority away from us in its fullest, uh, in the fullest way in which we would do it, which would be to actually look at a site plan. And when we had a conversation about this earlier, I think the applicant had said, well, the applicant's attorney, I think, had said, you will retain review authority for drainage and signing.
Right. Yeah.
And this is, this, the, the, the problem I have with that is that this is like the, this is a, this is a signature project for the town.
Mm-hmm.
And this is going to make, or break, I think it's going to make, North Greeley, if it's done properly. And it is like half of the frontage, right? From the, uh, from the intersection of King North to essentially where, uh, there's a pinch point. And so, it, it, it's going to make North Greeley, it is going to make North Greeley.
Hundred percent.
And for the planning board to be, I mean, that's what we do, and for the planning board to be put in a position where there is so much specificity in this, that the decisions are made before anybody does any kind of site plan review. And even so, that it comes to us, we are allowed, we are in this proposal going to be in conversations, because with the town board, but they are the final authority on site plan in this, they will take our advice, but that's taking away the authority from us. And I would hope that the town board would trust us to be able to do this in a way which is good for the town, from a planning perspective, from a development perspective, from the client's interest perspective, might be, and we've demonstrated that over, o- over and over and over again in this town. And we've demonstrated that over, over and over and over again in this town. So I think that we ought to be sure to advocate for ourselves and, in advocating for ourselves, advocate for the best development for North Greeley and for the town.
I'm completely comfortable with that. I think this document says that. The, the very last point, the application procedure, which is, you raised it the last time. And, and I, I think it was captured, if it's not sufficiently strongly enough, then we can make it stronger or, or say it in person.
No, it does, that's a, that's a great document.
Yeah.
But I, I just wanted to highlight that.
Yes, completely.
You know, and, you know, maybe there's a, maybe there's sort of a bullet point, these are the three things, right? That the, that the document's asking for.
Right, 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 I got you.
Height, parking, we agree with, that should be explored, you know, that's, that's fundamental. The third one is something that we need to really talk about.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah, well, the, and a few, just a few last words from me on, you know, I think the, the parking thing can, could be modified if the building was only three stories. And that would get rid of that as an issue. And it would actually save some site view for, for neighbors. And, and also, oh, there was one other thing, but I don't remember. So, but it's, but it's, I think it's important that this, this is sort of an experimental thing that we're doing, and it should be expressed as being experimental. And, you know, because that way, I think we would have some ways out if everybody after this wanted to say, oh, I want a four-story, I want to build one too, I want to build a five-story, for sure. I, it sounds like something from the past.
Well, I, you know, that's when we get to the substantive issues that there to be discussed. You know, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with Nick, but it, but, but it's, it's a worthwhile conversation, right? About the substance of the application, which is why we're having, you know, we want to get this piece of it out of the way, so we can have the, the substantive conversation of what is appropriate here and what would we like to see.
If, if, if it, if it's the case that this legislation is going to, in its current form, is going to precede any review of the site plan proposal, I think that that's wrong. I think we have it backwards. We ought to be looking at the site plan proposal before we validate this zoning text, because the zoning text controls that. So I don't, the way it's written now, it seems to me that we should actually be reviewing the, the development proposal itself before we're asked to actually agree to this language.
Right, because the, the zoning proposal is, is, is the development proposal.
Exactly.
Right, which we, which we object to.
Right.
Well, and I think also, we, not to harp on this, but we've spoken about this a lot, and we spoke a lot about it last week with the town board. Again, I don't think we should, you know, I don't think we should make a final call on this legislation until we have the information on parking, whether it's the B R P laws and regulations, how that works, and what the inventory is, and the projection for the other side of Greeley, et cetera. I mean, I, what I heard a couple of times last week was, oh, don't worry about the east side of North Greeley, we don't want it to be developed. Well, that's a statement made by this town board, this planning board, you know, whatever. That, it, it, it does not apply, it's, that's not the way you plan. So somehow, somewhere, we've got to take cognizance of, of that potential. And the fact that the current 10 people looking at this don't want anything on the east side of North Greeley is, I think, long-term, makes no sense whatsoever. I, I don't think it's legal, first of all, so it's, I, I take that case on a contingency, I think. So, you know, so I think that's, that's a concern also. So I think this B R P parking is critical. You know, the bottom line, this is why I guess I'm really scratching at, and no one likes me to say it, but if you don't have a focused purpose and intent section, guess what? We're looking at this for all of North Greeley, and no one wants to say it, but it's what we looked at last year and what the voters rejected. So, you know, we're dancing around it, so, I mean, do it so. I mean, all these characteristics and qualities, which are fantastic, impose that on the district or on the, in the building code, and, and we're set. I mean, but I, I just have this issue of, again, I, I presume this owner is fantastic. I, I'm sure he's a wonderful person, I, I know he is. But it doesn't make the parcel special or wonderful, as opposed to the parcels across the street, down the street, or even down South Greeley. So that's my issue here, and, and, and I, I, I'm happy to work with people if they can identify certain things that are special. I think, for example, one special feature of this property and the way that they're, they propose to develop it, I think the, the sound muffling of the train in the other parts of the town actually is, is really a benefit, as proposed. And that, I think, is something, is it, is it definitive? No, but I think it's certainly something, for example, that we can identify that might be helpful for this parcel if we're going to go just for one parcel.
Yeah, that would be a site planning thing, but I, I, I agree, I don't know. Yes, okay. There is a, I'm, I'm going to digress here, but for a purpose, so.
Okay.
And that's to do with parking, the parking district. The reference that you made, Chuck, to South Greeley, right? That lot, which is behind all of those stores, that is a parking district lot?
Yeah.
So I've often wondered, what is, wouldn't that be the solution to the east side of North Greeley? You have all of these lots that are 100 feet deep. You can only really reasonably develop there, geez, I don't know, for a residential develop, I'm sorry, commercial development, you know, I guess 50 feet deep, 40 feet deep, you know, depends. But wouldn't there be room to get at least a single-loaded lot there, which would be 40 feet deep, leaving you 60 for development? And perhaps the town could go into these property owners and say, hey, let's get together and see if we can solve this problem. Somehow they did it, were able to do it on South Greeley. And I don't know whether it would be something that they would be willing to take on, or they've tried, or it wouldn't happen. But if you could do that, you could unleash the development proposed potential of that side of the street.
Well, both sides, frankly.
Well, I don't, well.
It might help both.
Well, yeah, okay, fine.
Some more context for us.
Yeah. Everybody's talking about rash, I want to be irrational for a minute, and that's kind of like my comfort zone and thing.
We, we know you well.
I love it there. But, um, that, I, this, what you said about, this is what the, what, what the people really were clearly didn't want last year, amongst the wants and not wants, this was definitely, this density on this site, on North Greeley, was the end of the, the mother of all not wants in this hamlet. And, and, and what it, what it did do is filled up the whole site, but it did it appropriately. And I'm not saying that I liked it, nor I liked the process of how it got there. But this is important for you to add in your thinking. It was done last year, but it was done two or three years before that. It was, it was, it was hatching during the moratorium and kind of came alive in the, the form base, the form, that form came alive in the code that was trying to define it, which is happening now. But at the time, you have to remember, if you go back and you look at the plans of the forms of the form-based code, there was a seven-story parking garage next door to this thing. The parking was handled, not only for this property, that filled up the whole property, but all the other properties that were filled up. We ended up with seven parking garages in town because of the need for parking. Well, this project was kind of like the end of North Greeley, the end of the development of the form-based code, and it had attached to it a parking garage that, that, that covered the Susan Lawrence Building and a whole bunch of buildings on Lower King. And it was wrapped around a parking garage with plenty of spaces for everybody, bringing it. So that's what you have to include in your thinking, that this was a not want of a few years ago, and the not want had plenty of parking for it. Now we have the not want, but no parking for it. And there's the dilemma.
Are you advocating for a parking garage?
Actually, no.
So I.
Well, well, wait, but, but I can't be as eloquent as this guy, so, so bear with me.
A high bar.
Very high. But, but, I, I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying we need a parking garage. But what I am saying, that if there is a parking garage, or parking anywhere, it really needs to be part of the parking district, not somewhere in Nowhere Land. I mean, it, it needs to be there for one reason, to serve the district, to serve the businesses, whether it's on your property or not.
That's a predicate, which is so far, you know, out there, that I can't imagine that that would be any point of discussion now, because it's just a parking garage.
Well, well, I'm not even there either.
Right, so.
You know I'm not there.
Right.
I like surface parking.
I'm not saying whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, I'm just saying that it's not part of this, our near time, our near term future, so there's really no point in talking about it. And I'm just, just make one more point if I can. I don't, I'm not sure the planning board is the arbiter of what people want and don't want, right? I think it's our job to just advocate for good planning. What people want and don't want, I think, is the province of the town board who make the policy that yields the things that then we look at.
Yeah, well, I, I agree that, that the, the need, the needs and wants, the intimacy, the friendly, the welcoming, the charming, all of that stuff, all those words are part of a plan. And if a planning board isn't planning it, then, then who is?
The applicant.
No, the applicant is right. And, and then we have a chance to choose, does it fit or doesn't fit? All right, that's all. But more importantly, there was parking designed for this project that filled the whole property. It's in the parking district. I say if you take that building, a 10,000 square foot building, go four stories with that thing, give the guy all the apartments in there and leave the parking alone for the rest of the district, that's just a solution. And there's probably three other solutions that I could come up with, that, that should be part of a conversation where we're, everybody's kind of looking at what's possible, not how to make this thing that was turned down a year ago possible. So it's, it's kind of like somebody said, going backwards. And if that's irrational, I don't think it is, for me, it's kind of logical.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Someone else with their hand up online.
Oh, good. Can you let him in, Carrie?
Yeah.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yeah, we hear you.
Hello, this is Maggie Ferguson. I would like to build on a couple of comments made in the last few minutes. I know that I like the way Dick Brunel said it, that building 60, 60 feet there is kind of going backwards. You know, I, I, there was talk not too long ago in this conversation about what made the 50 North Greeley lot different from the other lots in the area, and, and the way I heard you all discussing it, there is nothing, it is not special. I think your words was, were. But my question is, what makes North Greeley so special compared to properties on King Street and Lower King Street? I mean, honestly, how many hundred of feet are they away? They're not half a mile away. And if this building goes up there, it's the way it's designed now, it's going to be the standard that everybody else is going to go to the zoning board of appeals for variances. And they'll say, well, 60 feet and higher density was described as boosting the community and helping the community, and it's whatever it is, 500 feet away from my property, 1,000 feet away from my property, why can't I boost the community by going 60 feet and, and higher density too? I understand there's a parking issue or not a parking issue on that lot. But my, but, you know, all this talk will all be gone, you know, not from, from this conversation at some point, and the other people will be in the place, and the building will be standing there, and it'll be a marker for development through the whole hamlet, and it is going backwards. It was direct, it was rejected by the voters, that standard, you know, and precedent is very important. I am very concerned that a law was written by and for property owners, basically what happened here. What happens there should be by and for the community, and the community rejected that height. And a one-off is not going to hold up, it's just not. So I really urge great concern to be focused on precedent, or not setting precedent, for us to go backwards and we'll end up with, you know, what was in the past, the form-based code, lot by lot. And it's just not, it's just not the way that the community wanted the future to be. We want to keep this a small town, and we want to keep it a, a, in a way that the community supports. So I, you know, that's my speech for tonight, I appreciate you listening. But I just found this, this idea that this might go ahead at that height and that density to be extremely concerning. And thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Carrie?
I'm sorry, but I, I think that Margaret raised a, a good point that maybe we haven't talked about, and maybe we should. Real quickly, we've asked that the specific design elements of this not be in the zoning code, that it be, right?
Yes.
But to the extent they may end up in the zoning code, this is one in particular that I think needs to be highlighted. That, in my opinion, personal opinion, 60 feet is way out of scale for this street and for the town. And there, there needs to be a really close look at, not the four stories, but the, because I think that, you know, if they want to grant that for density purposes, that's fine, but for the design of the hamlet, they ought to be looking at, really be, being very careful about the height of the street wall here. And to me, 60 feet, I mean, that's like a six-story building.
Yeah.
And it really needs to be looked at and really, because there's, there's potential for it to be, if these are 10-foot floor-to-floor and they're all residential, to be 40 feet instead, with a, I don't like the term, because I don't like the architectural treatment, but a mansard roof, it essentially slopes back from the street, so you see a cornice light of 40 feet, as opposed to a peak roof at 60. So those are the kinds of considerations that if we don't get this stuff, these things taken out of this, maybe need to be addressed before they are put in it.
I agree. And, and one of the things that, that Tom's words just said is, it, it just isn't going to fit in style while with the, the rest of the, the hamlet. But more importantly, why is this building going to be something that's going to draw people into the township for shopping and eating out? I know we, we're talking about another restaurant, maybe we should have a dance hall with it too, but, but it, that was facetious. I'm sorry, I shouldn't said that, but the, it, it's just, it's out of kilter with what surrounds it.
Sabrina, I don't know if it, what the, the process is, you know, at some point they look at it, but has A R B looked at this at all at this point?
No, it, no, it has not been circulated to A R B.
Okay, I, I just a point of interest, I mean, it's not our jurisdiction, but I, I understand.
That's too bad.
So it, it sounds like, I'm just trying to move it along. I mean, it sounds like we, we have a memo that we feel very comfortable with, thank you. And some additional points that we may want to highlight, either in the memo or in person. We're meeting next week in person with the town board, another joint meeting, correct?
Yes.
So.
The, the intention is, is that I think Jen and I need concurrence from the board in, in motion to just put this draft in the town board packet, which will be noticed to the community, to the public, when it is put online. That way, the town board will have this for their discussion, in advance of their discussion, for your, your joint discussion on Tuesday.
Right, so that means we, you would like to have it in their packets for Friday, right?
Yeah, would they ask for the information on Thursday so that it will be distributed on Friday?
And we add some of the things we talked about this time in, in the memo?
I think, well, that's a point of this, this discussion, I think, I think Sabrina and Jennifer are probably making notes and fixing our language once again.
It is coherent.
That's right, exactly. And so I think, I mean, let's go through the memos, let's, let's go on page two, or we talked about purpose and intent. So I think we've beaten that up, but, I mean, at least from my standpoint, you need to see something better.
May I point you to the preamble, just to make sure, because that, that says a lot of what you were talking about regarding, why is this a special permit?
Right.
Right, and so your, your discussion tonight, I think. Right? And so your, your discussion tonight, I think, is pretty much in here. You know, if you want us to strengthen it based on tonight's discussion, we can.
I think we should. I think, um, I, I, I think the issue about this BRP needs to be fully explored, uh, to the maximum extent possible to, to see if there can't be some relief through that mechanism for the applicant that will help with this, uh, this parking limitation issue.
Would that be, I mean, that would be, um, how do I say this? Would that be something we need to? I mean, that's part of the procedure of getting to a final project and not necessarily something that needs to be addressed now, right?
Yeah, that's interesting. So is it really something that really needs to be addressed in the zoning? No, it's really, they need to work that out.
They need to work it out.
Yeah, with the rules.
Failing doing that, they may have to, because it just doesn't work mathematically. They may have to reduce the size of their, of their proposal.
I guess, I guess the thrust of it is that we are uncomfortable with the mechanism that has been selected here. And that Jennifer's given us four or five different, uh, uh, optional, uh, strategies and.
And the last paragraph on page one, the planning board also questions the approach of establishing a new special permit use in the BR and BRP zoning districts as compared to other zoning mechanisms.
Yeah, and you even put in the, the mechanism that we use for chapel cross, chapel crossing.
Yep, so I think, that's good. From my perspective,
everything that we've discussed previously and tonight is in here, except for the specific, um, BRP issue that we discussed tonight. To me, that was new. I, I, I mean, Sabrina, unless I'm wrong, I mean, there, there might be like some vague reference, but this, this, like, conceptually how the BRP district contemplates off-site parking, um, and how that might be applicable to this application. I don't think that's in here, and I think that, that, that should be, um, highlighted. Other than that, I mean, I, I know we talked about process, which I think is in here, and we talked about, um.
Yeah, I, 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 one quick thing on the BRP, you know, it, it's an enabler, but it's also a regulator. Uh, I thought Chuck's, uh, context was very important. It was done also to make certain that there was sufficient parking, so it really was, in a way, a mechanism that controlled density. So it works both ways. The BRP cuts both ways, and I think that needs to be recognized, just because you're in the BRP, the real, the real historical context for it was that it was going to enable everyone would have enough parking. So there was this, if you will, suppression. I mean, look, market, uh, South Greeley would be far differently, uh, uh, developed at this point if it were not for the parking district in the suppression that the parking district has on, on, on the market.
So, so I, I, I think the BRP, uh, is relevant in, in, in one of two ways. One, either by code or law can be helpful to this application to minimize the ask. And, but we don't know, I, we don't, we will, I guess, learn that one way or another. Two, if not for one, then at least it introduces the concept, and for me at least, makes it easier to, um, apply a reduction in parking for the commercial piece to this site, in this site only, because it's already in a zoning district that contemplates such a thing. If not specifically applicable to this. So, I mean, anyway.
I would like.
Go ahead.
I would like to recommend that that, those sentiments regarding the BRP zoning district regulations in relation to parking be incorporated on page three of five.
Yes.
In your comments on off-street parking and loading. And, and kind of extrapolate that examination of the existing parking provisions allowed within the BRP zoning district be considered in relation to meeting the parking need.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, it, it fits there.
You know, I, I guess I'd assume that the, the, the BRP would be in effect anyway, within the context of what the ask is, but if it's not cited as those are the conditions under which, then it should be.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't in the zoning text.
You're right.
Yep.
You're right.
Yep.
So we can, we can add a sentence there.
Great. Yeah, great.
I just, I wanna be clear as we're, as we're talking about this, where these changes go.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And I do think the preamble does cover a lot of what we've discussed.
Yep, I agree. Yep.
The only other thing, sorry, but the only other thing that, that I think that maybe should be included, but you guys tell me, is, is this piece that, that Tom was talking about, this idea of, of not including sustainability measures, this aspirational TOD plus, um, goal in zoning text that somehow applies to other sites, but doesn't apply to other sites, but does apply to other sites. Um, but it doesn't, and, and I love it, I love it. Everything should be as affordable and sustainable as possible. Um, and TOD development is fantastic, and we need more of it in this town. We have, uh, you know, a, a great train station, an express train to the greatest city on earth. But it doesn't belong in the zoning resolution, I don't think, and I think we're, we're somewhat united on that as well. So if, if that, to, to the extent that, that's not in this memo, maybe it can be highlighted, Sabrina. I mean, you guys wrote it, you know.
Well, I, I wouldn't bring your attention to page four of five, where it talks about green building. That might be a good location to put that. We can say, in addition, these sustainability measures are, are not prime for legislation.
Right, here we just say might be onerous to other properties, but we might wanna just.
Just say it's inappropriate.
Yeah, doesn't really belong here altogether.
Yeah, there, there, there are other institutional devices for the town to use to exercise that, 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 uh, policy.
And they should.
Yeah.
And they should.
So we would change this language. This is, the planning board is concerned that these additional requirements, requirements are not appropriate. These additional sustainability requirements.
In zoning.
In, in zoning text.
I wanna add the word sustainability requirements are not appropriate for, for zoning text.
Yeah, but should be addressed, you know, with other mechanisms.
Right, thank you. Thanks, Nick.
Yeah, we should put that in.
Right, can be. Right. Yeah, okay. And Tom, are you good with the, um, process piece on last, um?
Yeah, I, I think it's, I, I, again, I think this document's great, and I think it's a, it's an excellent, um, outline of platform for us to expand on with them.
Yeah, in person.
Yeah, I think it's well done.
Yeah, I would say, uh, the only thing I would add in the last sentence on page five is that the planning board is in favor of a process that would allow the planning board to continue to exercise, um, its full jurisdiction to review the site plan. And I think the items that we've identified to pull out, which are site plan-ish and, uh, should not be in zoning, I think we've identified the appropriate sections.
And Mr. Kirk with chairman?
Yes, Chuck.
Based on something else you said about just looking, looking at other, looking at other properties on the east side or north or, or whatever, um, I, I think it might be appropriate to somewhere and say, look at, you know, to, to include all postal addresses, not just fifty, uh, in overview of the parking, uh, the parking area. You just can't look at one property and say, we're gonna fix a parking thing at that, but you have to see the impacts and the importance of all addresses in the parking district. I, I think you have to look at the whole parking district and see the percentages, the coverages, and, and the, and, and I guess the intensity of the various properties. So I think all addresses in, in the BR district, not just fifty, should be considered.
We made that recommendation, and the town board, I think, is on board.
You did that?
Not, not only the existing parking requirement, but the future development demand. So, so we've already put that in the hopper.
And I, I, and I'm sitting here saying that you're the planning board. I think you should be telling the town board what to do, not the other way around.
Well, the supervisor's now gonna cover it.
Mr. Chairman, if I.
Thanks, Chuck. Thanks a lot. Now you did it.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, may I bring your attention to the last sentence?
High fiver, uh-huh. For the record, you missed it. Chuck, high five the supervisor.
Mr. Chairman, may I bring your attention to the last sentence of the, of the document?
Yes.
Uh, which says the planning board is in favor of a process that would allow the planning board to exercise its full jurisdiction to review a site development plan, rather than the constraints reviewed proposed in the current legislation. Do you wanna change that sentence?
I think it's a good one.
I, I was just going to say, uh, to insert, uh, to continue to exercise its full jurisdiction to review the site.
To continue to, okay.
That's all. Everything else is fine.
Okay. All right, so we, um, if the, if the board is comfortable, uh, with the amendments, um, as discussed on page five and page four, uh, we can finalize this draft, or, and there's also, um, on page three. And if you want me to revisit those changes, I can do that, but if you would pass, um, a resolution, allowing staff to make these amendments and circulate this draft memo to the town board on your behalf.
Okay.
I'm comfortable.
Is there such motion then?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great work, you guys. Really, really well done. Thank you.
Very, very good. Thank you so much. I think this is really moving along nicely. Uh, by the way, there was something else that you should have all seen. Sabrina's put together, along with, uh, the town board, a nice way of summarizing and keeping us all up to date with the other boards and what they're doing. So I don't know if you saw it in your packet or sent an email.
Yeah.
I think it was a great initiative. Uh, I thank Sabrina and the staff for putting that together. It's really, really terrific. I think it's important for us all to follow and see what, what's happening in, in other boards and, and departments. So that, I think it'd be really terrific. And, um, I guess that's it until next week. Anything else? Did we miss anything?
Well, I just, I just wanna put a kudo, my kudo in. This, this, uh, has, this demonstrates how good the first document was, because we only talked about it for a minimalistic amount of time. For us.
Yeah, well, for us.
All relative.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's not just the, um, quantity and, and the speed, but, uh, again, echoing what Tom said before, the quality and, and putting good sense out of all of our discussions was really terrific. So thanks again. Okay, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.